Well, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the mayoral and districts one and three candidates forum sponsored by the Whittier Chamber of Commerce. This forum gives you the opportunity to hear from five of the candidates running for our citywide election for mayor, as well as two of the candidates running for district one and three of the candidates running for district three. All registered and qualified candidates were invited to be part of the candidates forum. However, some opted not to participate, or they didn't respond, so we are very, very happy with those who chose to be with us tonight. While the Whittier Chamber does not endorse any candidates, we do like to provide information to our members and the residents of our community, so you all can make an informed decision when it comes time to vote. Now that the LA County is overseeing our voting procedures in our local election, there are quite a few changes to the way you're going to vote this year. So it's my pleasure to introduce Yahira, who is the City of Whittier's election coordinator, who's going to give you some updates. She also has a table in the back with some very important information that you may want to stop and take a look at before you leave tonight. Yahira?
Thank you. Good evening. It is a pleasure to be here with you tonight. Again, my name is Yahira Ropessa. I am the election coordinator for the City Clerk Office here in Whittier. I would like to thank, first of all, the Chamber of Whittier and Ms. Crosby for giving me this time to briefly make an emphasis on three changes that will be taking place countywide starting March 3rd. First, vote-by-mail ballots will be sent out to all City of Whittier registered voters starting February 3rd. This does not mean that everyone will be receiving them on that day, but the county will begin mailing them that Monday. Second, voters will have access to not just one, but all voting centers located throughout LA County. Depending on the center, they will be open for in-person voting beginning February 22nd or 29th. Hours will be between 8:00 to 5:00 every day and 7:00 to 8:00 on Election Day. And third and final point, Los Angeles County has transitioned from the Inca Vote Machine to the ballot marking device, and it will be effective countywide starting March 3rd. A video documenting the voter experience using the ballot marking device will be posted tomorrow on our social media outlets and website, whittiervotes.org. Thank you again for your time, and if you have any questions, again, I will be in the back. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Yahira. Okay, tonight, so we are pleased to start the forum with all five registered mayoral candidates. So I'd like to introduce Rolando Canno, Louis Reyes, they're all in different places here, Isaiah Savage, Christine Singer Luna, and Joe Vinatieri. I did them in alphabetical order. Following the mayoral candidates, we'll be hearing from the candidates from district one, including Jessica Martinez and Maggie Mo. District one candidate Andrew Roble opted not to participate tonight. We also will hear from district three candidates, including Yasmin Farada, Alex Moisa, and Kathy Warner. We did not hear from the fourth candidate Lucian Petrosen, did not confirm his attendance for tonight. So at this time, I'd like to invite up our Chair of the Board, Elizabeth Martinez, if you'd like to rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you. Good evening. We could just follow after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Our moderator for this evening is local business owner and Whittier Chamber Board Member Kwan Lee. He's owned Mark Plan Insurance in La Habra for the past thirteen, almost fourteen years. Kwan is involved in numerous organizations in and around our community. He received his BA from Whittier College, his MBA from Biola University, and this is his second time that we've hosted this candidates forum where he has served as moderator, so he's experienced guy. Assisting him with questions and timing is my staff member, Selena Zambrano, who's our Director of Public Relations. I'd like to take this opportunity to give a big shout-out to Ross Guile from Digical, who is filming us today. The video will be available on the Chamber's website at whittierchamber.com, probably before the end of this week. And I'd also like to thank the Whittier community staff for our setup here today and use of the room, and Rudy Hernandez over here from RMH Entertainment for providing our sound. So let's give them all a big round of applause. We love our community partners. So questions for this evening's forum were developed with input from members of the Whittier Chamber, community with final determination from the Chamber's Executive Committee. As you can see, seating order of the candidates was determined earlier this evening, and we will rotate who gets to speak first, who gets to answer each question first. Audience members also have the opportunity for our mayoral candidates to ask questions, so there are papers over there. Teresa's going to wave. If you have a question that you'd like to submit to be chosen, you can write that down, and we have some volunteers who will be going through those for appropriateness and redundancy, that sort of thing. We will choose two questions for the mayoral candidates to answer from the audience. Okay, the format for the mayoral forum will be as follows. Each candidate will be given two minutes for an opening statement. They will be asked four Chamber-generated questions, and will be given two minutes to answer each of those. We will choose, like I mentioned, two audience-related questions, and they will be given one minute to answer those questions, followed by one minute of closing comments. As the candidates are speaking, a yellow card will be held up at 30 seconds, and then a red card will be held up when time is through. As we've mentioned before, this is a forum, not a debate, so there will not be rebuttal opportunities, and we just ask that you respect your fellow candidates up on the platform there. Okay, candidates, ladies and gentlemen, we are going to begin. Thank you so much for attending today. We hope you will get some great information out of this, and Kwan, let us begin.
All right, folks, welcome and good evening. We're going to begin by each, having each mayoral candidate present their opening statement. At a minimum, please discuss your credentials, why you are running, and your interest in the business community, and we'll begin with Mr. Savage.
Hi, everyone. My name's Isaiah L. Leon Savage. I graduated from Pasadena City with a accounting bookkeeper degree, so I'm a certified accounting bookkeeper, certified accounting clerk. My reasons for running is to make Whittier safe, again, and to apply common sense to the administration right now. We live in a town where we are understaffed as far as our police department is concerned. We have over 80,000 people living here, and we only have 128 policemen on the police department. My goal is to increase the police department this year by 480 policemen. That will put us at a solid 600. The reason being, having over 80,000 people in Whittier, it takes 52 police per every 10,000 person. We only have 128, and plus, we look after Santa Fe Springs as well. So I'm here to make our police department better. It'll increase our commerce, because if you think about it and put common sense to it, no one wants to do business in a town where it's not safe, where the police department is not up to par, and our police department is way below. Again, we only have 128 policemen. So, and as it stands, there is a petition circulating through the Whittier community to add those 480 policemen. So when it comes your way, any business owner, residents, please sign it. That's about it. That's what I'm here to do, to make this town safe, again, like it should be. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Savage. Mr. Reyes, your opening statement?
Yes. My name's Louis Reyes, and I've called Whittier home for 20 years. I'm married and have a father of two young children. Four generations of my family lived in Whittier. We have two of my brothers and sisters here. Not sure if I have to sit down or stand up.
Am I closer?
Closer. I have eight years of executive and legislative experience working for the local government. I know many worked with the Chamber when I worked with the State Senate and local Assembly Member in early 2000. My community of activism has been with the Whittier Latino Coalition. I was a founding member in 1999, and I spent thousands of hours dedicating about 15 years to increase Latino participation. It's been a long way since 1999. A lot of changes have happened. I'm a fourth-generation small business owner. I worked with my father as a teenager in manufacturing, went until my twenties, and went back to school, Rio Honda College, around 26-years-old, transferred to USC, got a degree in public policy and management, and that's when I started my career in public service, serving about eight years. Since that time, I spent the last 10 years, got married, with children, I have a five and a seven-year-old, and focused a lot on my family. But one of the things that, for me, working as a communication consultant, I have my own business, a lot of my clients are in the greater gateway area, and I decided to run because I want to make positive change for my family, for the community. I think we can do better, and one of the things I want to focus on in public policy is focus on the future. What are we doing for our children, and what topics future we're creating for all Whittier? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Mr. Canno, your opening statement?
Hi, yes, thank you. Sorry, I'm still getting over a cold. Thank you, Whittier Chamber of Commerce, for holding this event. All you members that have come out here, as always, supporting the community. My name is Rolando Canno. I'm an aerospace engineer. I'm also a security director here at one of the businesses in Uptown. So like you business owners, I see what goes on daily from sunup to sundown. My main three positions here and reasons for running involve education with an emphasis on special education. I want to push all our school districts and schools forward to achieve a new plane, a new goal. Most cities are not achieving the educational goals that we thought we would achieve 10 years ago. Here we are, and I want to push forth that idea, that it takes responsibility from city members to drive our schools forward. My second point, and second reason for being here, is for commerce. I see so many businesses here that are so successful, and it's through the hard work of every single business owner. They all bring a special flavor to Whittier, but one of the things that we lack in Uptown and other commercial areas are foot traffic. I would one day love to see, for instance, an Apple store in Uptown, Portos at the Quad, and a Cheesecake Factory out at, you know, at the Whitwood Mall to drive more traffic through us. You know, we do have traffic that drives right through, but in the end, it is our community that drives us forward. And our third point is safety. We've lost the vision. We've noticed through our city council meetings that plans have not been imposed that we were once told were, and we're back to square one. So my mission is to drive a plan forward and ensure the safety in our communities.
Thank you, Mr. Canno. Mr. Vinatieri, opening statement, please?
Thank you. There we go. So good evening, everyone, and thank you to the Chamber for putting this together. I'm Joe Vinatieri, and I've gotten to be your mayor for the last four years, and it's been a good time. And I'm actually very positive about things. I'm positive because I like the direction we're going right now. We talk about, we got a new city manager, probably the most important thing that the city council did in 2019, was a new positive city manager, new central library, changes in Uptown that you're going to be seeing, the Groves of Whittier, so many things that are happening that you need to kind of look at and see what's happening. But we've had the issue with homelessness, which has been a very difficult issue, but I'm glad to say, we've seen the Green Belt, we've seen Parnell Park, and the things that are happening there, and there's a plan. There is a plan, and you're going to be hearing about it. But this is actually all about direction. It's about direction for the community, it's about direction as to where we're going. And the question is, are we going in the right direction? So I'm of the belief that we are. Sure, there's things that we need to do, but we have momentum, things are happening. There's more work to do. We need to work on a people mover. We need to work on making sure we get the gold line here. We need to make sure that we keep the jobs, which the jobs are going really well right now in Whittier. We need more police officers. There's no question, we need more police officers, and we need to make sure that as a city, we're fiscally stable. But the most important thing is to make sure that this continues to be a great place to raise a family. That's what this is all about, and I'm asking for two more years so that we can keep moving forward positively and keep those Whittier values going. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Singer Luna?
Hi, everybody. Thank you to the Whittier Chamber for having this kind of forum tonight. Hi, my name is Christine Singer Luna, and I am running for mayor of Whittier. As a lifelong Whittier resident and cultural arts commissioner appointed by our city council, I believe that good government should solve local problems. Elected leaders must communicate with residents, and we need foresight. From our budget crisis to our environment, we are borrowing this generation for our city. Through my podcast, Work of Whittier, we have invited guests from local businesses, nonprofits, and people throughout the community to talk about why we all love Whittier and what keeps us here, and I see so many here tonight. This presented opportunities for me to support our local nonprofits by helping in various fundraising, including Celebrity Waiter for City PC, Dancing with the Whittier Stars for the Whittier Community Foundation, and countless other activities for the Boys and Girls Club. I do this for my community because I love to serve. My time working for the Whittier Uptown Association and being a committee member for the Uptown Whittier Improvement Association has given me the experience and knowledge of what needs to happen today and what is already happening for Uptown Whittier. I know our Uptown will be as vibrant, clean, and safe as other cities, which is why, in May, I collected signatures from almost 50 different Uptown merchants to ask the city council to approve the Uptown Streetscape Improvement Plan. People ask me, why not city council first? Why mayor? This is why. We are transitioning into a new decade, and we need courageous leaders for challenging times. As your next mayor of Whittier, I am committed to serve you and make local government work for residents and businesses. So tonight, please tag us @ChristineForWhittier on social media, and thank you for your support. Also, please visit christineforwhittier.com to request a lawn sign, and please vote for Christine for Whittier Mayor, February 29th through March 3rd. Put me to work as your next mayor. I am ready. Thank you.
It's the Whittier Chamber's role to advocate on behalf of its businesses, so it is important for us to understand your connection and understand of Whittier business community. So here's our first question. It is a two-part, and we're going to start with Mr. Reyes. What does business-friendly mean to you, and what is your plan to make it easier existing business to grow, or how you will work to attract new business to town?
Thank you. Business-friendly means that small business can thrive, that there's less regulation, that when you need help, there's ability to get help. You know, one of the things that we can do and utilize, you know, I've been a big library proponent since the VW measure was on, sat on the committee to support that, and it was a vision of a library that was more of a community center, that really looked to the 21st century. You look at other libraries, and small businesses have access to smaller, they have rooms, they have printing services, they have a lot of things that go for the new type of business development. Co-working, we have some co-working here that are private business-owned, but there should be some public business-owned co-working. I think safety is an issue. When you're going shopping in Uptown or anywhere else, there's people look and see the streets and how clean they are, and what's the presentation of where they're going to spend their dollars at. One of the things the city should be responsible is putting budget in to take care of the infrastructure. They don't, shouldn't rely on the Chamber, or the Uptown Association, or any other group. It's important for the city to take care of infrastructure and street safety, and make sure that things are clean. So those are the things, because people get attracted to those, and when they shop, the experience has to be great. And even more so, we have to take care of our entrepreneurship and foster entrepreneurship amongst people. A lot of home-based businesses based on internet are developing, and we need to bring those people in and help them thrive, because you never know, they'll be the next Amazon. So that's what we need to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Canno?
All right. To me, business-friendly, obviously, I spend a lot of time in Uptown, and I see what the jewel that Uptown is. Business-friendly to me is allowing you, as a business owner, to expedite your ideologies as far as the next business plan you have. Make it easier for you, and not wait through a process that takes three years at certain moments to be able to accomplish your goal to open your own establishment. We do have an exciting project coming through the, at the Nell's location, but all we ever hear is the big companies that are coming in, in and out, and other entities, but what about small business? How many of you have been approached and told, how would you like to open an extra location from something that you've already made a success in this new location? We need to make everything an easier process for you to be able to get your liquor license, business license, to be able to promote your business. We have a city channel where you see a painting of our Central Park, but it's pretty much a waste of time, because we don't see the highlight of every single business that's out here. We don't see your dream being put out there free of charge. One of the things that I would love to see are events in Uptown. We have them at Whitwood Mall, have them at the Quad, but a great thing would be to bring back the Uptown Festival. Close down the area, invite the community to come out, have the business come out free of charge, set up and reintroduce yourselves back to the community. Business sense means community. If we bring them out, they get to meet you and they get to rediscover who you are. One of the biggest things that I'm always told is, I never knew this was here. Lost opportunity. We got to conquer that, bring community back out, and introduce them to you, the successful business owner.
Thank you. Mr. Vinatieri?
So business-friendly, you know, what does that mean? It means that this is a place where people want to come and do business, because it's got a great demographic, it's got all the things that are necessary to be successful. It's an attitude. It's an attitude that's put out there by the city, and by the businesses, and by the Chamber. That's the most important thing. What's Whittier done? Whittier's won the LA-EDC Most Business Friendly City twice in 10 years, or one of the few cities that have done that, over 50,000 residents. That's a big deal. We've, what else have we done? Well, as I said, it's an attitude of not half-empty, but it's, how do we fix this? How do we finish it? How do we make you successful? So what are some of the things we do at the city? Do you all know that we have a red team? That is, if we see, if we find out that a business might be moving out, we mobilize people from different areas, and we go and talk to them about, well, what can we do to make it easier for you? How can we help you? Do you know that we have an incentive here? That if you are in the City of Whittier, and you're bidding on projects or contracts in the City of Whittier, that if you aren't the lowest bidder, which by law, we have to do, if you are within 5% of the lowest bid, and you live or you work here in Whittier, you get that contract. You get that business from the City of Whittier. That's something that we instituted just a couple of years ago. Look at the Groves of Whittier. Are you all familiar with the fact that when we did the Groves at Whittier, we said to them, we said, hey, not only do you have to give us some extra revenue, but we want you to hire people from Whittier. You know the fencing around the Groves? That's a Whittier company that does that. The security is a local company that's doing that. So we're getting all kinds of business because of that. So there's a couple of other things. We just changed the awnings ordinance for Uptown to conform it and make it much more business-friendly. So it's an attitude, and it's an attitude that we have to push hard on.
Thank you. Ms. Singer Luna, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. So what does business-friendly to me? What does it mean to me? It means that there's equal opportunity for multimillion-dollar corporations and your small mom-and-pop shop on Greenleaf. That's what it means to me. We need to have a balance between multimillion-dollar corporations coming in and supporting our small businesses that don't have a big bank account to wait and wait and wait. Every single month that our city is waiting, they're paying overhead. They still have to pay for their rent, they still need to pay for their employees, but their doors are not open. That is not business-friendly to me. So some things that I would like to do first is, in order to support Uptown Whittier, I think Uptown Whittier is our true gem of our community, we need to move forward with the Uptown Streetscape Plan. Like Walt Disney says, people come to Disneyland because of the atmosphere, for the beautiful flowers, because the trashcans are painted, because the light posts don't have dents or scratches or tagging on it. We need to support our public property. Uptown Whittier is public property managed by the city, which is why I was part of all these different organizations. I got in there, I pulled a seat to the table, because as a concerned citizen, I wanted to know, why haven't we done anything? And it's true, you know, you know, there have been things presented tonight that's, well, I didn't know that. I didn't know that. So how do we make the public more informed about things that our city is already doing? I am so grateful to know that. We are moving forward, and we're building up our local economy, but we need to be more clear and more transparent in regards to our messaging. How many new business owners are coming into the city not knowing about this? So what I propose is to look at our community and economic development department, and look towards ways to working with, you know, Canno and people in our offices, to make Whittier stronger, and that's why economy is one of the platforms, is one of the pillars of my platform, because I know to have a strong Whittier, we need to have a strong economy. Thank you.
Thank you. You're up, Mr. Savage.
All right. Well, this is the common sense of it all. We have poor business here because it's not safe here. If you want to have a, working a friendly business community, to me, is people in the community owning most of all of those businesses. I'm really not into foreign or outside interests. We need to focus on supporting our local farmers, supporting our local business people. We need to focus on keeping our promises to the people that have businesses now, when they need upgrades. It needs to be done, not debated on. And business-friendly to me means, I can go to the store and not have to concern myself with someone stopping me in a rant because they want some change, because they're in a different mind state. And we all have involved, you know, come in contact with that in the city. So it's not friendly. Business-friendly to me means, I can go and get a haircut at the barber shop, and my children and grandchildren can go and watch a movie and meet me right after it's over without any worries. We don't live in a business-friendly community because we are sorely unprotected. We need to be more protected. It does no good to have any of this if we don't have the proper protection that we need as far as the police. We need to build a stronger police department, and then everything else will fall into place. We need to support our local businesses highly. Encourage them. Give them some expansion even, because money in the community, circulated in the community, helps the community grow. Money taken out of the community makes the community weak, and this is what's going on right now. There are more outsiders owning businesses than local people. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, question number two, another two minutes. Given the state's unfunded mandate for Whittier to deliver approximately 3,200 housing units by 2022, how would you propose we meet the mandate while preserving the character of our low-density neighborhood? Mr. Canno, you're up.
You know, this is an important question here, since many of us used to address the same issue right before the homeless issue became top priority. We all stood up and fought against huge developments. Currently, we have the Fred Zinnell that's going to create over 700 structures, and we already have a heavy traffic situation on Sorensen and Whittier. I, myself, where I live, we have the Davidson complex that's creating 60-something units, let's say 60. That's going to be two cars per household, that's 120, plus if they have kids, they're going to be driving. Now where's the room for all these vehicles? We can stay in compliance by not just focusing on developments, but on allowing our community members or people that own homes to build granny flats. We have seniors, we have our parents. We have seniors, we have our parents who are retiring, can no longer afford to live on their own, so they move back home. We have our kids who we push forward to go get a great education, take a chance, and when they don't succeed, we have them come back home. A granny flat makes sense because it does not change our structure, it keeps it a community. And I've heard time and time again, "We cannot allow this to be built in that area because it's going to take away from parking." What about these huge structures that are being built with 700-plus buildings? Is that not affecting our traffic? We have had many years of people finding these signs, these symbols that were imprinted on our cement, you know, on our sidewalks, and a lot of people take pride. They remember the days where our government invested in our community and had them built on the sidewalks. But isn't it a surprise that we have, we find so many of those in Whittier? It lets me know one thing. When was the last time that we redid our streets, that we fixed our infrastructure and made it part of our community? But ADUs would definitely make sense nowadays so that we could comply with what the state is requiring us to do, and it makes sense for our community.
Thank you. Mr. Vinatieri?
Actually, I'm really glad you asked this question. Does everyone here know that we have been mandated by the state of California under the RENA Housing that we have to come up with 3,400 new units here in Whittier? 3,400 new units. We are a built-out community. So, where are we going to put everybody? And this just came down from Sacramento. Do we have the money to do it? No. Has the governor given us the money? The legislature? No. And yet, we're being mandated to do this along with a number of other cities. The city of Huntington Beach got sued by the governor because even though we have a plan, Huntington Beach hadn't even put together a plan, let alone carried it out. So, you all need to be aware of the fact that we have been mandated to do this. Now, what's interesting about this is we've been doing this as a city for several years now because we saw this on the horizon. So, we have been building. And when we build, it's a real issue because we have to find the balance between meeting these government mandates, but at the same time, trying to keep traffic calmed, trying to make sure that our quality of life does not deteriorate. And it's a really tough balance. And you all need to be aware of something else. There's a bill in Sacramento right now called SB 50 by Senator Weiner out of San Francisco who basically says that if you have a corridor where there's transit, that by right, a developer will be able to go up three stories and four stories. There will be no need to come to the local city council, no need to go in front of the people, they will have the right to build that. Talking about local control, all because we have a housing issue. So, what we strive to do here in Whittier is we strive to find that balance, and we've been doing it. And we are very sensitive to traffic, I understand that. And we have ways, and we have other things going on here. So, as we do things here, we look and strive to take care of that balance for all of us.
Thank you. Ms. Lina?
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Yes, that is a great question, and that's an even better question because just last weekend, I hosted a homelessness town hall with an expert from Yes! In My Backyard. And what was really cool about that organization is she talked about homelessness prevention and what we can do in regards to housing. So, one thing that I believe in is that we should bring mixed-use housing. I believe it is already in the plan. I was one of the few millennials, the few young people, I should say, that actually went to the Envision Whittier workshops to establish a general plan for the next 20 to 30 years, which is weird to me because as a young person, I plan to live here for the next 20, 30 years. But that aside, we need to move forward with mixed-use housing in Uptown Whittier. I really believe that, you know, once we have residents actually living on the streets, not specifically living on the streets, living on Greenleaf Avenue or on Philadelphia in buildings, and, you know, they'll be able to take care of their streets more often, which is great. Another thing in regards to legislation is, in different cities, they work with credit unions for loan incentives and so, for building additional dwelling units or the granny flats that we've been talking about tonight. So, you know, moving forward, how can we bring that type of affordability that other cities are already doing to our community of Whittier? It just takes a person to speak up and to say, "Hey, this is a great idea, let's put it into the code and ordinance," and, you know, get staff reports to move forward on that. And also, another thing looking forward, as your mayor, I would do my best to go to lobby to Sacramento to get tax incentives for homeowners. I really believe that as a homeowner, you know, that you have a responsibility to take care of your own property, and by improving it with additional dwelling units, you should be able to accept different incentives. And then also, when we are building affordable housing, we need to look at what affordable means. There is very low income, there is moderately low income, and there is low income. Affordability does not mean a $1,900 one-bedroom apartment on Whittier Boulevard. It doesn't. Thank you. Good night. Or not good night, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Savage, you're up.
Well, housing, we should stop rewarding the wrong behavior. We have 1,897 child predators living in houses here in Whittier, yet we have families living in their cars going to work. Stop rewarding the wrong behavior. You want to improve the housing? Send those people back where they came from. Tell the state we're not their playpen anymore because that's what they're using this town as. Look on your phones, look up Megan's List and see how many of these people live in the community. And they all have houses. Now, what about their hard-working family? We are rewarding the wrong behavior. What about the hard-working family that has to live in the car but still makes it to work on time? We need to start changing our way of thinking. If we want to improve it, we're going to literally have to, like, get in this thing's face. Meaning, this mandate that I hear about, Agenda 2030, we need to abandon that completely. Seriously. Because it means us no good. Because look what it's done to us already. It's decreased our police department. It has increased homelessness and transit in our town. So, we need to abandon this. We need to get back to what built this town. Agriculture. Hard work, every day. Honest work, honest pay. That's how it goes. No more of this, "Oh, we..." This is not a socialist nation. So, we all need to realize that right now. There's no, no one gives you anything. No one, there's no handouts. So, the key to housing is stop rewarding the wrong behavior. Take these people who have committed these heinous crimes, send them back to the state and let them deal with them. And if they want to come and sue us, let them try. Because, I don't know if y'all know, but there is a petition circulating to have Newsom recalled because he's doing things to towns like this, threatening to sue because we don't want to jump in line with 2030. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Reyes, same question?
Yes, absolutely. I, the, I'm the type of leader that's not going to really blame other people for their problems, but deal with it. We do live in one of the biggest counties in the world. LA County has 10 million people. We have 3,400 shortage of housing. So, how do you do it? Well, first of all, I know there's a lot of housing in Whittier going up, but all market rate, the city has never said, "You know what? Let's work with you, let's create some inclusionary housing programs." Which means that 10% to 30% of housing could be non-market rate. Non-market rate meaning, it could be low-income, moderate income, so that we can have housing for everybody. A lot of people are talking about the ADUs. You know, one of the plans that I would look at in terms of granny flats or the small living such quarters is, we need to get at least 500 in. I look at the numbers. I would say, as mayor and have staff do research and say, "Is it feasible to do that in different areas? And will we can provide incentive to build quickly?" Mixed use. We have the ability to put mixed use in Uptown and other areas that supplement business, more traffic, more interaction, walkable communities are best. And finally, SROs. You know, we talked about, we lost about 120, 130, I forget the exact number, SROs Uptown, Whittier, the Halle Hill Town, the Greenleaf, which was depth, and they need to go, but, you know, the new way of thinking is, SROs are small rooms, shared co-ops, where people of different ages, single adults, can live in 400, 500-square homes that's shared areas. Those are things that we should do. Look for the future, adjust.
Thank you. All right. We're at the halfway point, so I'm going to remind the audience to, if you have any questions of your own that you'd like to submit, please see the folks in the back, they have a card for you. Fill out that questionnaire and we'll try to get you in. Thank you. All right, Mr. Vinatieri, we're going to move on to you with our third question, two minutes. Whittier's homeless situation has greatly affected both residents and business owners throughout our community. How do you propose to address individuals experiencing homelessness who are unwilling to accept the resources that are being made available to them?
This is a two-minute answer. As we all know, the number-one issue in Whittier is homelessness. It's, it is multifaceted, and I want to make sure we all understand what we're talking about. You have homeless women and children, families, you have adults who are homeless, we have veterans, we have emancipated minors who are now out. There's a whole different series of people. When it comes to families, Whittier has done really, really well. How many of you see homeless families on the street? You don't, because we have a great program. The area where we have the problem is older adults, male and female. And so, we all know about the Boise case, right? We all know about that. And all I can tell you is that this has been a very difficult issue for us, but housing is one aspect of it, and we need to do housing. But don't let anybody kid you thinking that it's just housing. It's also drug and alcohol addiction, it's also mental illness. And the problem is, until we have some help from the state on the mental illness to bring down the bar on the LPS Act, until we have some help relative to drug and alcohol rehabilitation, we're going to not be able to do a whole lot of things other than offer beds, and we are in the process of putting together a plan that you all are going to hear about shortly coming up, to deal with that, with enough beds for everybody, but at the same time, basically saying, "If you want a bed, if you want services," what's going on at Parnell Park right now is we're offering services. We have the Sheriff's Department, LASSA, First Day, PATH is in there. So, we're offering services, but at the end of the day, after you've been offered services and you don't want the services, then you must leave the park. And that's what's going on at Parnell right now, and that's going to be rolled out, I think, citywide as we are able to work through this plan that you're all going to hear about shortly. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Lina, same question?
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Lee. So, we all love our neighbors, right? Whether you've lived here for 20 years or you moved in two days ago, I'm fighting or running and representing you, my neighbor, okay? So, I visited Parnell Park back in December, and what was interesting was when I was speaking with service-resistant, as they've been coined, individuals, one thing that they were talking about when there are sort of vigilantees throughout their community, they didn't speak highly of them. So, you know, I asked why, what's going on here? And the rhetoric is just that, "Oh, well, that person's mean, that person's a jerk." So, I think if we first kind of examine the situation, how we're talking to people, how we're treating people, there needs to be respect and there needs to be dignity. So, I went on a police ride-along and I was there with an officer, and we met with an individual who was staying behind the Friends of the Library bookstore on Comstock and Bailey. And, you know, it was really cold that night, and this guy is like, "You know, officer, I'm ready. I want to go to First Day." Oh, my gosh, that's awesome. Like, to see that on my own ride-along, that's really great. But, you know, there was an issue in communication at First Day, said, "We need to talk to this person, you need to talk to your sergeant." Well, there's a different sergeant for every single shift, so there's a lapse in communication there. And that gentleman said, "Okay, I'll wait a few hours. When you figure it out, just come back and get me." So, that's a loss for that human, for that person. So, there needs to be a way of initiating this streamlined con... And I feel like a big part of my messaging tonight is streamlining communications. I mean, I'm an Internet Communications Manager, right? That's what I, that's my career, that's in getting the word out to the community. So, I just think specifically, how am I going to address it as your next person, your next mayor for the city of Whittier? I'm a certified health coach, so the first thing I want to get is fruits and vegetables to these people. Let me feed you so you can listen to me. I think just as a Jewish woman, that's always been a really good strategy, so I hope that tonight we could feed you sometime and you'll listen. Thank you.
Thank you. You're up, Mr. Savage.
All right. My plan is simple. I hope you looked on your phone and looked up Megan's List. Take all 1,897 child predators that they have living here, move them out. Put good families, hard-working families, in those places. There's no reason that the third-largest school district in Southern California should be home to 2,000, 1,897 child predators. It doesn't even make sense. So, that's what you do. You want to cure the homeless problem? Also, reopen, petition, that's your First Amendment right in the Constitution, to have those state institutions reopen. Because some of these people on the streets don't even want help. Some of these people on the street are violent. Some of these people defecate right in front of everyone else. They need help. So, as a community, we can petition the state to open up the mental institutions and know what, that they closed down. As a community, we can petition to have all 1,897 child predators taken out of our community and put good, decent, working, hard-working families in those homes. If you want to cure the homeless problem, apply some common sense to it. We, again, sound like a broken record, but we are rewarding the wrong behavior. It's simple as that. Somebody that makes a career out of hurting children gets a house, three grand a month, and a car. Now, here goes the same person living in their car, going to work, a nine-to-five job, living in their car. So, stop rewarding the wrong behavior. Move up, let's petition as a town to have all these people moved out and then start moving decent people in.
Thank you. Mr. Reyes?
Can you repeat the question? I just want to be clear.
Okay. So, Whittier's homeless situation has greatly affected both residents and business owners throughout our community. So, the question, "How do you propose to address individuals experiencing homelessness who are unwilling to accept the resources that are being made, offered, or available to them?"
Okay. So, we're pretty much focused on service-resistant individuals. You know, it's really, as I agree, a complex issue. I mean, tonight is the homeless count. I've done this since 2014. You know, have experience with the homeless, did some police work with the homeless, and that's always a question of service resistance. And, you know, the way I looked at it, and one of the things, why I'm sitting up here, because we've been dealing with homeless a little while, and I just didn't like the way the city was handling it. I would completely disagree with how it's been approached. We do have to treat people with dignity and respect, and we have to communicate with them, two-way. We have to provide dignity in terms of showers. We have a mobile shower that has been only used once recently in city of Whittier. So, imagine that. You are homeless, you're in your community, and you can't even take a shower. Service-resistant people have, don't, lack trust, they have mental health issues, and yes, there is a drug addiction issue going on. But we need to also communicate with them consistently, which they have. We have nonprofits to do that. The city doesn't do it. The nonprofits do it. The county does it. We need to work with them closely, get staff, empower our police officers, do what they need to do, and stop politicizing it. People will get help when they're ready, and we have to have a system in place when you're ready. We had a homeless plan a year and a half. Six people died on the streets of Whittier in the last six months. Four women, two veterans. We should have taken action a long time ago. People will be service-resistant, but they are afraid, and we need to help them.
Thank you. Mr. Conno, same question?
You know what? This is an important question here. I was part, as many of you were, in attending all these meetings about the homeless here in Whittier. We went to the Homeless Consortium, we went to other events throughout the city, and we were promised the plan. Recently, in our last city council meeting, we were informed that that plan was never implemented because we were hoping on a Hail Mary that this case from Martin versus Boise would be overturned. So, where are we? Back at square one. I recently visited our police department, and one of the shocking things that I saw was that the majority of calls were involving our homeless. was that the majority of calls were involving our homeless. Those are revenues that are misspent, because we should be having social workers dealing with those members in our community, especially when we have so many nonprofits that specialize in working with our homeless population. What is the Boise case ask from every city? You hear our officials saying, you've heard of the Boise case. But do we really understand it? It's very simple, you look it up, and it tells you a clear description. Take accountability for, the city must take accountability for these members in the community that are either not service-resistant, or actually need help. Some of you, you go online, and you either say, let's help these people, or let's not. We're against shelters, we're for shelters. What about responsibility? Let us do what the Boise case asks us to do. Take accountability, create a plan, run by the city, give the power back to our police department, create funding for our police department, and remove the problem, but also clear a path to help those that want this help. Lack of accountability has us where we are today. You can see it for yourself, as long as the city does not take accountability for itself, and relies on a nonprofit, by kicking the can, we will end up back at square one, and I fear what comes next.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to start with you, Ms. Sanger Luna, we're going to, this is a two-part question, okay? First, Measure W is a proposed three-quarters sales tax, that's 0.75% increase, that is on March 3 ballot. Will you support this measure? That's one. In the event that Measure W does not pass, what is your plan to address the city's budget shortfall in the coming year? Two minutes.
Thank you so much for that twofold question. So, Measure W is going to increase our sales tax 0.75%, like we were just told. I do not support that measure, although the funds will go to our city, I do not support the measure, because I believe that that tax, sales tax, Measure W disproportionately affects individuals who are not here tonight, because these individuals are not informed about our city, and these individuals cannot afford to leave our city. If you're, if you guys, after this, you know, go outside, just notice how dense the housing here, excuse me, how dense the housing is here in Uptown Whittier. Well, I'm out there in Uptown all the time, and I know that this tax will also disproportionately affect the businesses, and take away from them. So, how do I plan to, you know, work for this budget shortfall? Well, we are already in a deficit crisis, right? We've talked about that, you know, in part due to the rising costs of Calpurs issue. So one thing that I would like to look at is changing from, changing the model that we look at Calpurs, and moving it towards a benefits-oriented retirement system. As we are aging, as we're going through, we are having so many great new medical, you know, medical miracles, you can say. But those costs are rising. My grandmother and my parents, you know, they are on the new medication, and they need extra help, and that costs, right? Getting old is not easy. So what I'm looking forward to is to supporting our city, the people who work in our city, and instead of shifting it from a pension base, shifting it towards benefit space as they enter retirement. Thank you.
Thank you. Same question, Mr. Savage, part A and part two.
Health tax. An increase on health tax.
Sales tax.
Sales tax, and we already have an increase on sales tax anyway, so, I mean, it's just going up further and further. We need to start thinking in a more clear way when it comes to health, meaning, we could do things for our community, for our children, for the future of our children, to make sure they don't have to worry about health insurance when they get older, or as they get older, as they grow. I'm not familiar, if anyone in here is familiar, with annuity funds. I believe we should attach those to our children, every child that grows up and born in Whittier should have an annuity fund attached to their birth certificate, because it will cover their health costs as they grow. Right now, I told you in 2018, we were in some trouble, and we are slap in the middle of this trouble now. So an increase on sales tax is not going to, it's like putting a one-inch Band-Aid on a four-inch cut. Yeah, it closes it, but it's not going to stop it from hemorrhaging money, and that's what it's going to do. And plus, it's going to dig into the pockets of the people in the community. So, we should all get together on this, and kind of kick back, and think about this before we just say, oh yeah, you know, increase the sales tax, and we'll have no better healthcare. No, give, let's do it like we used to do it. You know, Blue Cross, Blue Shield, the stuff like that, health insurance that actually, you know, deliver it. My mother was forced on Obamacare, so I'm not with any of, like, health insurance like that, at all. So the thing is, we need to think about our children's future. Thank you.
Let me go and repeat the questions for the remaining three of you. Okay, so here's, it's a two-part question. Pretending to Measure W, is it proposed three-quarters, or 0.75 sales tax increase, that is on March 3 ballot? Will you support it? And then secondly, if it doesn't pass, what is your plan to address the city's budget shortfall in the coming year?
Well, I'll just make, I support Measure W, for various reasons. You know, having worked for the state senate as a consultant, dealing with the budget within this district during the Great Recession, we see the draconian cuts, and everything that happened that really decimated local cities. That was my job, worked with city managers, school districts, and really going in there and taking the brunt of people's frustration during that crisis. Back then, I'll use our neighbor, Pico Rivera, took some courage and leadership, and passed the sales tax, because they saw it, the long-term effects. It was very, very unpopular. But they did it. And they're doing some great things over there now. They're getting the fruit. Whittier was, I guess, banking on oil for that revenue. And now, we're like, wow, we have to do something, we can't cut the entire park staff, because that's a bad idea. So, let's do the sales tax, because you know, if we do sales tax, it's okay, because AQMD will take it from us. Not about, well, we should do it because it's the right thing to do, because we want to keep tax dollars in our city, because we have to spend it. Now that's why I support it. No matter who wins mayor, they need that. And I know that from a policy perspective. And I would have taken that step, action, a long time ago, because it was the right thing to do, as unpopular it is, because you make unpopular decisions up here. If it didn't pass, you're going to have to look at the cuts again, because Calpurs is controlled by the state. I'm on Calpurs. You don't control Calpurs, and it's tough. You're going to have to look at cuts.
Thank you. Mr. Conno, same question.
You know what, I for one do not support Measure W. I reached out to the city, when I realized that they put the pros, but not the cons. The pros were a possibility of spending revenue coming in from this 0.75% tax, sales tax increase, possibly going to our police department, possibly going towards solving the homeless solution, possibly going to other different purses that the city is low on funding on. But I asked specifically, what about Calpurs? Could this, if the city council decided that all this extra funding would go directly to Calpurs, could that happen? Could this be directed to just one specific thing? Because we're being informed that it could go to many. And the answer is that yes, it can. This is a general fund, not a specific fund. I think many of us would have preferred this sales tax increase as a special tax to go directly to our police department. You know, for the last few years, Whittier officials have been projecting financial concerns involving our increasing retirement costs. As of 2018, 2019, our budget shows 1.8 million dollar deficit. Council expressed this when Measure L was being discussed, and it was pushed aside as a non-issue. Our costs have gone from 6.4 million fiscal 2018-19, to about 1.8 million fiscal 1819. And it's going to increase ahead. The, I know that Whittier currently has about 22.8 million in reserves, as well as 4.8 million from city trash collection systems that no longer exist. This could be implemented to balance out our budget, and to ensure that we don't fire our city employees. That's not a solution. We need to work on increasing our commerce, bringing in finances, to support Whittier strengthening our system, not by adding a taxation where us, the public, got to pay for a mistake the city made.
Thank you. Mr. Vinatieri?
Thank you, it's because it's a great question. I strongly support Measure W. And it's pretty, pretty clear to those of us who've been involved in this, that this is a situation where we have basically a fiscal emergency. It's not anything that we have done as a city, we have always had a balanced budget, always. Thankfully, we had city council members a number of years ago, who took money and put it aside, because there was a chance that Calpurs could go south someday, the rainy day. The rainy day is here. So we need strongly this revenue for purposes not only of Calpurs, but we also need it for purposes of police officers, we need it to help with the homelessness, we need help probably for a little bit of a reserve fund, not sure, at this point in time. But if we don't have it, it's really simple, you can't cut your way out of this situation. We're not at the bone yet. Forty-eight percent of our budget, everyone needs to understand this, forty-eight percent of our budget is the Whittier Police Department. I'll be darned if I'm going to cut police officers, because we need more police officers. So how do you make things work? You have to find some way of cutting, but at the same time, bringing new revenue streams in. And if we don't pass Measure W, that's precisely what we're going to have to do, and we will do it, and we'll find a way of doing it. But I want to make sure everyone understands, that what's happened to the City of Whittier has happened to many other cities and counties, some of which have been going bankrupt, and it's come down from Sacramento, and you're going to hear me talk about Sacramento unfunded mandates, Sacramento was sitting on a $21.5 billion surplus last year. What's that money? A lot of that is our former redevelopment money. Has the governor said, hey, we'll help out the cities and counties? No. That money's staying there. Is that money helping us to do affordable housing? No. So we, at the local government level, we're stuck with this. We're going to work hard, we're going to make it happen, but I want you all to vote yes on W, please.
Due to time constraints, we're going to try to take two questions, but we're going to limit it to one. Here's a question, and that'll be a one-minute answer, starting with you, Mr. Savage, so, do you feel that Whittier would be directly impacted if there were a repo, repo of Proposition 13? That's the property tax.
What's the question again?
So, do you feel that Whittier would be directly impacted if there were a repo of Prop 13?
Okay, one minute.
One minute.
All right.
Not repo, but repeal.
Repeal, okay. But anyway, I have three words, and everyone should look this up, public pension liability. Yes, one exists here in Whittier, and it has a lot of money in it. We need to stop pretending like it's not there. They use what is called some kind of retirement fund. There's money here to solve our problems. There's another $63 million that was supposed to be used for the YMCA's that never got done, so we got $63 million along with the public pension liabilities lying around here somewhere. Anyway, that's what I would do. Because it's in our disposal, we have it, the community pays into it. If you have a business, if you pay property tax, you are paid into the public pension liability. So, let's take that money and use it for the community.
Thank you. One minute, Mr. Reyes, same question.
Yeah, I have a little experience with, you know, the property assessment, and Joe's the expert here on this table, but, you know, Prop 13 isn't going to get repealed, that's just a rumor. What they're doing is talking about a possible split role, that would, to go into commercial property, and reassess commercial property, and it really comes down to ownership. There's a loophole in ownership, that people move the ownership, and then they maintain their baseline on Prop 13, commercial property. So that's what's going on, is equity issue, and trying to get more tax dollars through commercial property. But Prop 13 in general, being repealed, I don't, I don't see that. I think that's political suicide for anyone whatsoever in California, Democrat or Republican. And they've been looking at the split role for quite a while, so commercial property, removing that from the, somewhat removing it from Prop 13 protections.
Thank you. Mr. Conno, same question.
Yeah, with Prop 13, you know what, I've touched just lightly on this, I don't see any, any repeal. I have, what I have been able to acquire as far as information on it, it does seem unlikely. If it were to pass, we would definitely face a lot of issues ahead, especially with the uncertainty of where our nation currently is, but I really don't see it happening. You know what, I know that, I've read a couple of arguments where if it were, if it were repealed, some state that it would benefit the property owners, some state that it would create havoc on our commercial entities, but from what I've been able to lightly read on, I don't believe that this would be repealed. I also do believe that it would be political suicide, so.
Thank you. Mr. Vinatieri, same question.
So I need to ask everyone a question. How many of you here are property owners or business owners? Raise your hand, please. Okay, this is a very real question, because the split role, this is on the November ballot, and that is, we're going to change Proposition 13, so the business owners in that are taxed differently than residential owners. I don't need to tell you, I mean, I do property tax as a living. This is what I do, and so I've lived with Prop 13 for a long time. I can tell you one thing, that if Prop 13, the split role is set up in November, what's going to happen? Those taxes are going up, so nobody pays, property owners, they don't pay tax, they pass it through to the consumers, right? Because it's another cost of business. So that means everyone's going to get hit with this, all right? Everyone. All I can tell you, Prop 13 works, don't mess with Prop 13.
Thank you, Ms. Sanger Luna, you're up.
And can you repeat the question?
Yeah, I will.
Repeal, right?
Repeal. So do you feel that Whittier would be directly impacted if there were a repeal of Prop 13?
So in regards to Prop 13, I don't think Whittier specifically will be impacted. I think what we're looking at, you know, when Governor Newsom talks about this, is there are a lot of fees that are, you know, given to multimillion-dollar contractors, and there are anything from parking lots, to, oh, you need a new signage, and these fees can get up to the hundreds of thousands, in the amount that we're looking at right here. And they're blaming it on Prop 13. Well, I think it was really important, you know, that everybody who's a property owner raised their hands, but it really, Prop 13 affects you if you're 55-plus, and you would know that. But no, I don't believe that repealing it will directly, or we should keep it, because I don't think that that is for Whittier. It looks like that kind of discussion is more for, like, major metropolises, which Whittier is not yet. Thank you.
Thank you. So, one-minute question, our final closing comments for each one of you, we're going to start with Mr. Conno. Closing statement.
You know what, like I said, my name is Rolando Conno, I do have three sets on my platform. Education is something that has not been touched upon so far. We do have our six school districts within the City of Whittier that are struggling, mainly our special educational system. I'm a special needs advocate, and I attend a- I'm a special needs advocate, and I attend a lot of meetings, and one thing that I see is that the bar is set very low. I think we need to increase that bar, and I think we need to strive as a city officials to push our educational system, invest in our own schools. Another major issue is our homeless problem. I do believe that we do have to take accountability, we do have to make Whittier our priority, and we do have to establish a system that's going to comply with Boise in order to ensure that our police department has the tools to take care of the issues that are occurring all around us. We also have to involve our nonprofits to come out and support us.
Thank you. Mr. Vinatieri, your closing statement?
So, I just want to say thank you to everyone for allowing me to be your mayor for the last four years. It's been very invigorating. I got to be honest with you, sometimes it's really tiring. There's a lot of stuff going on. And we cannot allow ourselves to get pulled down into negativity that we see around us, we hear from Washington, we hear it from Sacramento. We're Whittier, and we take care of our problems. What's exciting for me is it's all about some vision, moving forward, whether it be the gold line coming to Whittier, whether it be biotech jobs at PIH Hospital, whether it be a new people mover, autonomous vehicle, these are all things, believe it or not, that we are working through right now. My view is we need to continue to look for the future, we need to continue to make this to be the best place it can be for our families, we need to look forward, and we need to be, we're going to get through the homeless thing. We're going to get through it, I know it. It's going to take some time, but it's still just a very exciting time, and I appreciate the fact that I've been your mayor. Go to jovforwhittier.com. Thank you.
Ms. Luna, your closing statement?
Thank you. Thank you again, Mr. Lee, and thank you to the Whittier Chamber of Commerce for this opportunity to speak to my town. My platform stands on the pillars of economy, environment, and education, because to have a strong Whittier, we must have a strong economy, environment, and education system in place to support it for the future. Thank you for your time tonight, and remember to vote for Christine Singer-Luna for your next Whittier for mayor, and I will get to work for you. Please follow us on social media, @ChristineForWhittier, and visit christineforwhittier.com to sign up to volunteer, claim your yard sign, and donate. Our campaign is different. We have a chutzpah or agallas to work smarter and more efficient towards a brighter vision for Whittier's tomorrow. And at the end of the day, I'm not running against any of these men up here. I'm running for all of us. Thank you.
Mr. Salvage, one minute. Closing statement.
Thank you all for tolerating me. My goal is simple, make Whittier safe to live in again. Simple as that. We just apply common sense and practical application. We need a bigger police department, sorely. We have the money to get a bigger police department, but for some reason, it's just being sat on. It's time to make our town safe. It's time to start telling the state, no, we won't be your dumping grounds anymore. So, whatever problems you have with your penal system, take care of them up there. That's, that's my goal as mayor of this town, is to make it safe. And I'm committed to do that. Whether I get in this seat or not, we will have 480 policemen put on this department.
Thank you, Mr. Salvage. Mr. Reyes, your closing statement?
Well, I'd like to thank the chamber and everyone who attended this evening to listen to all our views. We, we have different views of Whittier, but I can say one thing, that everyone on this, up here cares deeply for the city, and we just have different views. So, thank you so much. One of the things that I felt that I chose to run against a 14-year incumbent on city council is, you know, I want to look and see what to do for my family. I have 22 members of my family living in Whittier. We are growing. Came here as a young, 21-year-old man, and now I have, my brother's a grandfather. We didn't talked about protecting the environment and the green jobs. That's something that's really on the horizon that we need to address. And one of the things I also want to address as mayor is government reform. I would look at charter reform and do 12-year, 12-year term limits, gender equity commissions, and as well as having more discussions. I think we, two-way communications is vital in government. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, folks, we're going to take a five-minute intermission before we go into the next session to allow folks in the audience to kind of mingle and ask your personal questions and...
Okay. Folks, if you are staying for the Districts 1 and 3 forum, kindly find a seat. We're going to go ahead and get started. We're going to follow about the same format we followed for the first one, but I, I want to begin again in case anybody didn't hear the format the first time. So, good evening. Welcome again to Districts 1 and 3 Candidates Forum, sponsored by the Whittier Chamber. Again, if you are staying, could you please find a seat so we can go ahead and get started? While the Whittier Chamber does not endorse any candidates, we do like to provide information so our business members and our residents can make an informed decision when it comes time for voting. So, thank you all for being here today. Tonight, we are pleased to have candidates from both Districts 1 and District 3. We have two of the three candidates who qualified to run this evening for District 1, so I'd like to welcome Jessica Martinez and Maggie Mo here today. Thank you so much for being here. And from District 3, we have three of the four candidates running for a city council position, so I'd like to extend a welcome to Kathy Warner, to Alex Moisa, and to Yasmin Once again, our moderator for this evening is Kwan Lee. He is the owner of Mark Plan Insurance in La Habra. He is a chamber board member and involved in many organizations in and around our community. Assisting him will be Selena Zambrano, who will be our timekeeper and keeping us on track tonight. Let's see here. Questions that we have for our Districts 1 and 3 candidates, they will be asked the same question. We will rotate within districts so that everyone has a fair chance of answering first. Questions were developed with input from our business community with final recommendations and final decisions made by our executive committee here tonight. So, we have a variety of topics. The format for this Candidates Forum will be similar to the one we just had. Each candidate will be given two minutes for their opening statements. District candidates will be asked three chamber-generated questions. We will be given two minutes to answer those. As candidates are speaking, at the 30-second mark, 30 seconds left, a yellow card will be held up as follows, giving you a warning, followed by a red card when it is time to stop, when your time has expired. As a reminder, this is a forum, not a debate, so there not be opportunities for rebuttal, and we just ask that you respect everybody's time. Okay, candidates and ladies and gentlemen, we are going to start. Thank you very much for attending our Districts 1 and 3 Candidates Forum. And Kwan, let's begin.
Thank you, Carol. Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So, we're going to begin by having each district candidate present their opening statement. At a minimum, please discuss your credentials, why you are running, and your interest in the business community. And we're going to start with District 1. Ms. Martinez?
Thank you. Good evening. It's a pleasure to be here tonight with you all. The reason that I think that business is important to Whittier is because business is important, period, no matter where we are in the world. And here in Whittier, we need as much business activity as possible because that's what creates not only a thriving culture and community, but it also pays for the services that our cities need. So, therefore, as much as possible, we need to encourage business in the city of Whittier. My father was a small business owner. I know exactly how hard business owners work, especially small business owners. You put in a lot of hours. Now, here in Whittier, we have a problem, the homeless problem, and I believe it's affecting not only the real estate industry, it's also affecting our storefronts. People are no longer getting the street traffic that they want to get because of the homelessness problem that's deterring the street traffic. I live in District 1, so, and I've lived there for about 18 years now. So, I see what goes on in District 1. I remember what it looked like 18 years ago, and I see what it looks like now. We have homelessness on our trails, on our sidewalks, everywhere. They're leaving feces and needles. So, I believe that what we need to do, number one, is clean up our homelessness problem so that it will help our business community, and we need to make improvements throughout Whittier for storefronts, and also especially for the streets. We need to clean up the streets in Uptown Whittier. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez, and Ms. Baragnon, correct?
Yes, Baragnon.
Baragnon Mo.
Good evening, Whittier Chamber, City Council, and friends. My name is Magdalena Baragnon Mo. My friends call me Maggie. I have lived in the city of Whittier my entire life. I love the city of Whittier, and I love my community. I want to be, I want to represent District 1. It is important for me to represent the city of Whittier because of the issues that impact District 1. I have been involved with community organizations such as the past president of the Whittier Sunrise Rotary. I am part of the, I continue to be on the board for Whittier Sunrise Rotary. I'm on the board for the Whittier Regional Symphony, and I'm a member of the Whittier Voters Coalition. I want to make sure that business development becomes a priority in our city. It is important in the city of, it is important for the city of Whittier and for District 1. Public safety is another important issue for me that I believe is very important. I want to make sure that we support our Whittier Police Department and our first responders so that they can have the best equipment for protection. I want to be a voice for education and the arts and children with special needs. The city of, the children of Whittier deserve the best teachers available so they can have the best education possible. I have the knowledge and the desire to want to make great needs in the city of Whittier. This is a prestigious position, and I take it, I do not take it lightly. I pledge to the city of Whittier that I will work very hard and will do my very best job to be your representative. Thank you.
For District 3, I'm going to reread the question for you folks. So, at a minimum, please discuss your credentials and why you're running and your interest in the business community. Ms. Warner?
Thank you. I'm running for reelection to the Whittier City Council so that I may continue to make decisions that are in the best interest of the greater good for Whittier. My experience as a local elected official, as well as my experience as an owner of two small businesses in Whittier for over 30 years, has provided me with the skill set to successfully continue as a member of the city council. Despite the fact that the city lost five of our seven car dealerships during the past recession, Whittier rebounded, and all five of those sites have been repurposed with thriving businesses. During the last six months of 2019, we have a net number of 94 new businesses in Whittier. And during the past four years, we have a net number of 400 new businesses in Whittier. Of interest to the business community should be the organics recycling mandate that became effective in 2016. As of January 1 of this year, any business that produces four cubic yards or more per week of all types of trash are required to comply with and have source-separated organic service. That's Assembly Bill 1826. Approximately half of the businesses in Whittier currently utilize a three-cubic-yard dumpster that is picked up once a week. This is an example of something that should be of importance to businesses. I'm committed to continuing to end homelessness, which is one of the most serious issues the city of Whittier has faced in decades. Despite the fact that enforcement of our ordinances has been weakened by changes in state laws, we must remain diligent as we continue to pursue a solution to this health and safety crisis. Treatment must be provided for the drug-addicted and the mentally ill. We must continue to provide additional police officers and resources to support our police departments so they may continue to fight crime, which in turn provides support for the business community and residents. I remain committed to maintaining local control of our tax dollars. Remember, Whittier means business.
Mr. Moisa, same question, two minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, chamber, and good evening, everybody who's here watching the event. I want to thank the chamber for hosting this, today's forum, the first of many for the council candidates. For those who don't know me, I'm Alex Moisa. I'm running for Whittier City Council. I've been a 25-year resident of Whittier, and my wife and I have raised three children in Whittier, all attending public schools. I'm a business owner in Whittier, owning a small law practice in Uptown Whittier, doing estate planning and family law. I've also been involved in the city in a variety of different organizational capacities, both with the city and in the nonprofit sector. For the city, I have served on the Whittier Parks and Rec Commission, and I've also served on the CTAC, which is the Citizens Technical Advisory Committee for the Puente Hills David Habitat Preservation Authority. Along with that, the local nonprofits that I've been a board member of include the Boys and Girls Club of Whittier, Spirit Family Services. I'm especially proud to have been the incorporator and first president of the Friends of P.O. Pico of State Park, a great organization to help to refurbish a park in Whittier and keep it clean. And last but not least, I'm currently the vice chair of the Whole Child located also in District 3 of Whittier. Excuse me. I'm running for Whittier City Council because my family and I are invested in Whittier's future. We want to make Whittier a great place to live, work, and play. If elected, I will work hard to address economic development, budget deficits, and homelessness. I want to take Whittier to a different direction, or a new direction, one where our residents are not afraid to frequent our local parks, one where you don't have to go to, out of the city to shop, and one that supports our local small businesses. A strong city is a, a strong city is a strong city for business. And of course, my interest in the business community, I'm a small business owner, just mentioning my law practice, and as a resident, I want to be able to continue to shop in District 3. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Farada?
Thank you. Good evening, folks. My name is Yasmin Farada, and I'm running to be your next Whittier City Council Representative for District 3. Thank you all for being here tonight, and thank you to the chamber for putting this forum on. See, I was born and raised in Whittier, so I've seen this city change drastically. But what I have not changed in District, what I have not seen change in District 3 is our leadership. Time and time again, we often meet festering problems with reactionary responses that often cost our city more money. I'm a strong believer that we can do better. The funny thing is that our city is not all that way. You see, our city is made up of go-getters, dreamers, and folks that make Whittier the amazing city that it is. You're going to hear a lot tonight about how business-friendly Whittier is, and it is, it absolutely is. But that's not due to the support that local businesses are receiving from the city, but from each and every one of you that make our city the Whittier business-friendly city that it is. I'm excited to be here tonight to share my platform with you all in local businesses, which means bringing support to them, ensuring that local businesses have a shot at thriving in our district, cutting through the red tape, making sure there's not a long time waiting for permits, and making sure that they're given the opportunity to market their businesses, as well as providing a comprehensive resolution to our growing homelessness crisis that we have here in our city. And lastly, the most important thing is to ensure that we are including the community. I'm a firm believer that we cannot rule from the dais without walking through our community, which is why I have taken it upon myself to canvass since August of last year. I'm a firm believer that together we will move forward, and I'm excited to share with you the rest of my platform. Thank you.
Just a disclosure, it's the Whittier Chamber's role to advocate on behalf of its businesses, so it is important for us to understand their connection and understanding of Whittier's business community. Our first question to Ms. Baragnon, District 1. Other than the homeless issue Whittier is facing, community-wide, describe the biggest success, challenges, and opportunities as it relates to businesses within your respective
District 1 has many wonderful assets. I like to think about the positive things that the city of Whittier has. However, we have many things that need to be taken care of. Number one, I'm embarrassed...
Number one, I'm embarrassed to say, but District One is, has the dirtiest streets in the city of, is the dirtiest district in the city of Whittier. We need to clean our streets, we need to clean our alleys. In order to have businesses thrive in the city of Whittier, it's important to have clean streets, it's important to support our business owners, it's important to have a good infrastructure, and as I walk, especially for lighting, we need lighting. This is one of the reasons why I got involved, because we, we do not have good lighting, we live in the dark, and it's not safe. And as far as a homeless community is concerned, as I walk the city of Whittier, I walk door to door, and my job is to connect with people. I see so much trash and shopping carts and so many things that need to be resolved, and it's really a shame that we, as a city, cannot get together and clean up our environment because it needs help. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Martinez, same question, two minutes.
Can you please repeat the question?
Other than the homeless issue Whittier is facing, community-wide, describe the biggest successes, challenges, and opportunities as it relates to business within your respective district.
Okay. First, I will talk a little bit about the biggest success, and I believe that is finally seeing Fretzi Nellis occupied with something going on there. The residents in District One have for so long seen just a big, huge, empty lot, so it's wonderful to see this construction going on and to welcome those new members into our community. So, the big, I think the business, the biggest challenges right now that we'll see an increase and uptick in, this is, that's going to challenge the business community here in Whittier, are the number of taco trucks, unlicensed vendors that are all throughout Whittier that are causing, I believe, a conflict with the local restaurants. They are basically competing with business and business owners. I would like to see the Uptown Whittier area booming with businesses. There's no reason why we shouldn't have a ton of people in Uptown Whittier. I kind of see Uptown Whittier like I see Old Town Pasadena. There isn't any reason why we shouldn't have as much traffic in Uptown as there is in Old Town Pasadena. We have a college campus that's just a few minutes away, we have Rio Honda College, we have plenty of young people. So I believe that there is going to be a problem here in Whittier, and if we don't have it right now, we're going to see an increase in that. I think that affects our business community. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, back to District Three. We're going to start with Mr. Moisa, same question, two minutes. Let me repeat the question.
Yeah, can you please repeat the question?
Other than the homeless issues Whittier is facing, community-wide, describe the biggest successes, challenges, and opportunities as it relates to businesses within your district.
Other than the homeless issue?
Other than the homeless.
Okay. The biggest issue we have in District Three is the declining economic vitality on Whittier Boulevard. Over the last probably four or five years, we've seen a proliferation of dollar and discount stores and depot stores, and so I believe that is driving down the economic revenue of Whittier Boulevard, and we're also losing some major retailers on Whittier Boulevard and in Whittier Boulevard in the near future, and those are going to be our biggest challenges. Our biggest challenges are going to be finding new businesses, but not so much that, it's going to be our city's ability to partner with private entities, private business, in order to attract the businesses, the businesses we want in Whittier, and also that not only does the business or the landowner, but also the city have some skin in the game, and that's the only way we're really going to get the investments and the businesses that we say we want in Whittier and that we say that we can maintain. But in the meantime, I think the biggest success, unfortunately, is probably still the Target. I love Target. The Target's about ten or fifteen years old now, but beyond that, there's more a slew of failures on what's going on in Whittier Boulevard. There's a failure of a city council that spent hundreds of thousands of dollars adopting a Whittier-specific plan and an Uptown-specific plan only to just disregard it with variances, only to basically still have a hodgepodge of businesses on Whittier Boulevard that don't have any unity or continuity or theme. That's going to be really the biggest challenge of District Three. I was running because of the economic development or lack of in Whittier, and I want to change that, and I think, I think that's the biggest challenge we have right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Farada, same question, two minutes.
Thank you. I'd like to start with the successes. We have seen an increase in varying businesses in terms of diversity and what we see in terms of restaurants and what's opening up in District Three, but unfortunately, at this time, we have more challenges than we do successes in District Three. One thing that I think we need to take into account as leadership is that we cannot apply the same model that we do to District One that includes Uptown to District Three. We know that the walkability of District Three is very different. We have different plazas that are oftentimes left unaccounted for and not given the support or the fostering to make it as successful as it can be. Not to mention that, you know, sitting down with various local businesses, I've had heard conversations that they are mom-and-pop shops, that in order for them to survive, in order for them to really, you know, see their livelihood, is to be able to market their restaurants with sandwich boards and posters, that they're facing fees and unnecessary, sometimes it seems even punitive, policies that force them to put it up for one month, take it down for two months, and if we really want to consider ourselves Whittier business-friendly and community-centered, then we have to make sure that we're supporting and uplifting Whittier residents that own local businesses.
Thank you. Ms. Warner, two minutes.
Thank you. So, I've been excited about the fact that I started my campaign actually a year ago, and for the last year, I've been walking our neighborhoods, walking precincts, and it's really been a great experience. In addition to receiving lots of emails from lots of constituents, when I visit with folks in different neighborhoods, they talk about what are some of the successes in East Whittier, on the Boulevard in particular. And over and over, time and time again, folks will talk about the fact, as I alluded to in my opening statement, that we lost our car dealers, but they've been very, very pleased that those properties have been repurposed, a success, an example, the Gables on Whittier Boulevard, that was a former car dealer, and that was developed into condominiums. And did you know that there are several affordable units within the Gables? But you probably don't know which units are the affordable units, because that is not made known to the general public. However, when the Gables were built, there were special loans available to folks of low income that could purchase those units. To me, that is a success, that is a success to our neighbors. In addition, Friendly Hills Marketplace was repurposed, and would you love to know what is going to go into the former Orchard's hardware site? I would too. We do have an LLC that filed an application to go into that site, but we cannot tell by the name of that LLC what the actual business is going to be, other than we know it is not going to be a ninety-nine cent store. As far as challenges in East Whittier, Whitwood, more than likely, looking at the nation as a whole, probably Sears and Pennies eventually are going to have to change their model, their business model. So that's a challenge, but that also presents an opportunity for us. I'm excited to talk with Kim Ko, the owner of Whitwood, to talk with colleagues, to get responses from staff as to where do we go next in Whitwood. Thank you.
Thank you. Back to District One. We're going to start with Ms. Martinez. This is a two-part question, two minutes. This is a two-part question. What does business-friendly means to you, and what is your plan to make it easier for existing businesses to grow or attract new businesses to town?
Well, for one thing, I would like to see fewer regulations. I believe one of the other candidates talked about some of the problems with putting up signage and things like that. I think that that, anything that takes away from businesses willing to put their stakes into District One, we should remove as many of those as are humanly possible, whether we add, give them tax incentives, something like that. Whatever it is that needs to be done, we offer it to businesses to come and put their stakes in. So, I don't know whether we can work out a deal, some, something, but we, I think also, what we also should do is have business owners come together and talk about how to bring those businesses. I'm sure you all have plenty of ideas as far as what would make you move to another city, so I'd like to hear those things.
Thank you. Ms. Baragnon, same question?
I'm sorry, can you repeat the question again, please?
I'm going to repeat that question for you.
You can call me Ms. Mo. It's a lot easier.
I will do that.
Okay.
Okay, Ms. Mo. Two-part question. So, first one is, what does business-friendly mean to you? Number two, what is the plan to make it easier for existing businesses to grow or attract new businesses to town?
Business-friendly means that we need to examine the ordinances in the city of Whittier. We could have revenue in the city of, we could have tax or money revenue in the city of Whittier if we were able to manufacture, but because the city ordinance does not allow us to have warehouses in the city of Whittier, that is an industry that we cannot tap into. Business-friendly to me, to me means security and helping the business owners with their storefronts. If a storefront is etched or the storefront is broken, I believe that this, that we in the city should have some kind of a process to help business, business owners. Business-friendly to me means that we should not have, if, if a restaurant, for example, I have a friend that owns a restaurant, he is able to serve alcohol inside the restaurant, but he's not able to serve alcohol in the patio, that to me does not make sense. We have made some great strides in the city of Whittier. Many of the restaurants are now open until two o'clock in the evening. Some of them choose not to stay up till two o'clock in the morning, but it gives a, it gives a business an opportunity to be open till two o'clock if they want to be. As far as positive interaction, I would like to see, the city of Whittier is a wonderful community. I would like to see more events like the Christmas Parade that brings many people from all different areas to the beautiful city of Whittier and to send, to spend money in the city of Whittier. I love the idea of the farmer's market. It promotes the city of Whittier. I would like to see more promotion in the city of Whittier for the businesses in the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Shifting over to District Three. We're going to start with Ms. Farada, two, two minutes, two-part question. Okay, so first question is, what does business-friendly means to you? And secondly, what is your plan to make it easier for existing businesses to grow or attract new businesses to our town?
Yes, thank you. So, first off, what business-friendly means to me means making sure that we are giving businesses an easier time when they're trying to expand or establish themselves in our city. And what I mean by that is ensuring that we decrease our permit times. I think it was mentioned earlier tonight, we have waiting times that are oftentimes very, you know, it, it really, it gives mom-and-pop shops a hard time when they have to wait three to four months to, for a permit. They're unable to operate, and, and these are community owner, these are community members that own these businesses. What I, what I also believe is that we need to provide fewer regulations. District Three is lacking in terms of allowing businesses to flourish, stay open later, have access to alcohol permits, and honestly, I think we also need to ensure that the, the environment that we're providing here in Whittier is one conducive to people that live outside of our city as well. We have opportunities to be a hub for folks that are coming from different cities. One small way that I believe that this can happen is if we incorporate a charging station, something as simple as a charging station in local business areas for people coming outside, coming from outside of town to be able to charge their car. We know that a lot of folks are heading to Brea, to Montebello, to Fullerton, because Whittier happens to be behind in a lot of different facets in that way. I believe that, just speaking to a business owners myself, they're lacking support in District Three. We know that Uptown Whittier is what Whittier is known for, and that's great, but we also have District Three, which is on the opposite side of Whittier, opposite side of Whittier that also is lacking support.
Thank you. Ms. Warner, same question, two minutes.
So, business-friendly city, what does that mean? First of all, it means that Whittier has been awarded the Business Friendly City designation twice in the last six years by the Los Angeles County Economic Development Commission, and in order to receive that recognition, one must go through a checklist of things that have been done on behalf of the business community. In addition to that, at the counter at the Community Development Department within the city, we have basically a one-stop permit process. When new businesses come in to inquire about what they need to do to open up in the city, they sit down with one of the employees, and they have a checklist, and the department will make sure that all of those that need to be at the table are at the table, whether it's Public Works, whether it's in Community Development, or the Police Department. Those folks will be brought in to help expedite that permit process. As far as waiting times to have plans approved, if there are more plans coming into the city, then the city contracts out with planners so that our applicants do not have to wait. As far as attracting new businesses, for years, the city has had an economic development plan, that plan goes to the council every quarter, the public has access to that plan, and that plan specifies what the strategies are that the city is carrying out, along with the Chamber, the Chamber is a huge partner, to attract new businesses. The staff and council members go to ICSI, the International Shopping Center meeting, at least twice a year to market and to speak to potential new businesses, and that's how we got In-N-Out to come into the new growth development. It has taken years for us to court In-N-Out, but it was finally the right space, in the right place, at the right time for In-N-Out, and we can't wait.
Thank you. Mr. Moisa, same question, two minutes.
Okay, I remember the question right. Okay, regarding business-friendly, I think business-friendly begins at the city council level and council's vision. I understand what council member Warder is saying about being awarded the Friendly Business Award, but I haven't spoken to any businessperson who told me about their friendly experience or their short experience, or how fun it was, or how much, or how much more money it was going to cost them to stay open late or to work on, or to build a second floor of a business. So, I think to a large degree, the, the business-friendly comes from a city council that shows that it wants to work with business, that it wants to partner with businesses, as I mentioned earlier, the council that's willing to invest in its businesses, to use community block grant money to borrow off it, or use it to promote the businesses and bring the businesses we want into Whittier. Regarding also making that easier, as a few people already mentioned here, the streamlining and the permit process is very important. That process may be streamlined, but so far, I haven't seen it happen. For instance, even at the personal level, if anybody wants to do work on their house that's over fifty years old, you're going to get the Historical Resources Commission, you're going to get a layer of bureaucracy that's going to bring about twenty-five-hundred or three thousand extra dollars to the table. Businesses suffer the same way. I actually have an issue with, with our city sending plan checking to a third party outside of the city, because then you have someone who's plan checking who isn't invested in the city, isn't invested in you or your project. So what happens, they look at the plan, if they find anything that's even manually out of order, they just check it off. They don't talk to you about it, then they give it back to the city, and the city says, here, you've got to fix these six or seven or fifteen problems. So I don't necessarily see that as being an efficient way of dealing with, with local businesses. Thank you.
Thank you. Shifting back to District One. Ms. Mo, we're going to start with you. Two minutes, question. Whittier's homeless situation has affected both residents and business owners. So the question, how do you propose to address individuals experiencing homelessness who are unwilling to accept the resources that are being made available to them? Two minutes.
There's not one answer to solve this, this complex problem. There is not one answer to solve this, this complex problem. As your city councilwoman, I will partner with the county and the state to bring resources to our city. We need to build resource centers. We need to build resource centers for the homeless. We need to build resource centers, rehab centers, I'm sorry. We need to build resource centers for our veterans, our LGBTQ community, and work development. We need to bridge with professionals who have been successful in dealing with the homeless. Many of the homeless are violent people, and people are afraid. I and the Whittier Police Department are not trained. We need to, we need to train the Whittier Police, the Whittier Police Department should not be responsible for babysitting the homeless community. We need to have professionals. We could bridge, we could have partnerships, you know, but, but in my, and in my opinion, if a person wants help, for every success story that we have to be able to help somebody, that is a wonderful thing. If a person does not want help, then our job is to provide a bed for them. And if they don't want help, then they either have to leave or we, we have to have resources to be able, resources and professionals to deal with a homeless situation. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Martinez, same question, two minutes.
Great, thank you. Sacramento caused this problem by passing AB 109, 47, and 57. They increased the number of criminals that are on our streets as well as drug-addicted individuals. The main problem that we have, as has already been referenced, are those people who are, who are service-resistant. Those people are the main problem here in Whittier. So I believe if, if a person does not want to have services, okay, you can't literally force someone to clean up their life, but maybe we should have boarding homes, boarding houses, where it's very inexpensive, very cheap, where they can go in. Back, maybe about 100 years ago or so, when we had the inception of, remember, the original intent of the YWCA or the YMCA, they provided some affordable, very, very inexpensive housing for individuals. As a short-term stopgap measure, I believe we need to clean up the streets of Whittier. And that means if a person does not want to have services, then they, number one, they can either leave the city, or what we can do is reinforce vagrancy laws here in, in the city. I'm sure we have some statutes with regards to vagrancy. And right now, as we speak, they are counting the homeless that are in our city. And from last year to this year, we had an increase of about 100 individuals, from 186 to, and, and added 100 to that. And so I'm interested to see what it's going to be like in just a, a few minutes from now. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, shifting over to District Three. Ms. Warner, same question. Should I repeat the question for you? Okay. So Whittier's homeless situation has affected both residents and business owners. The question, how do you propose to address individuals experiencing homelessness who are unwilling to accept resources that are being made available to them?
I find it very frustrating that this particular part of the homeless issue we see throughout the nation, we see throughout the state, we see throughout the county, and we see it in the city. And it's very frustrating that we, we don't see the definitive answers from our nation-state-county. So this is a really tough part of homelessness. Councilmember Bushon and I sit on the homeless ad hoc committee for the council, and Henry invited me to go with him to Pomona on a field trip to look at the structure that they have created there as well as the services that they have provided there. And it seems to me that the utilization of these professional social service providers, the nonprofit organizations, they are the ones that have the answers. And so as a direct answer to this question, I believe we have to go to those professional social services providers, and we have to look at the other locations that are handling the homeless issues. What are they doing? How are they solving it? In Pomona, they have some buildings that have been constructed around the structure where the homeless live. And they, the mental health providers come into those buildings and provide services. The nonprofit folks go out to the homeless. I think we heard our governor say the other day on the radio, as he was talking to us about this problem, we may have to ask those people that are service-resistant over and over and over until they are ready and until they have the trust to be able to accept services and go into treatment. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Moise, same question.
Can you repeat it for me, please?
All right. So the first part is, Whittier's homeless situation has affected both residents and business owners. The question, how do you propose to address individuals experiencing homelessness who are unwilling to accept the resources that are being made available to them?
Well, ultimately, it's come up a few times already here, whether the homeless issue, a mental health issue, an employment or economic issue, or drug or alcohol resistant issue. So where we are in District Three, the epicenter is Parnell Park, and everybody sees that as a, as a drug-addled and service-resistant group of people. I really do believe that we're going to have to have regional housing in the short term to address the homeless issue. But in the interim, we have to establish and get back Parnell Park. I celebrated my daughter's 25th birth, first birthday 25 years ago at Parnell Park, in that same area where everybody says they wouldn't want to even come close to, where syringes are. But ultimately, I think that we have to get Parnell Park back because it's going to show to the community that we have some nerve, and also to the city, to other cities, that we have nerve. Right now, Whittier is the example of what not to do with the homeless issue, because we have a problem that we can't seem to do anything about. I do believe that, I do believe that law enforcement has been handcuffed in dealing with the issue. And quite frankly, I propose, I would think you'd do this. Once we clean out that park in a, in a couple, in a couple of days, we'll get the people out, clean the park. But after that, we will need to have a law enforcement stationed there for a brief period of time, however indefinitely that may be. But I was there the other day taking a volunteer to check it out, and we were asking the police officers there a simple question. If you had the resources available, if you had a cop here 24/7 for a brief period of time, would there be a homeless problem here? And the answer was, no. And just kind of smiled at me like that. Of course not. So we have a contractual agreement with Santa Fe Springs. We have access to other officers, and we need to work with other cities. So let's talk to Santa Fe Springs. Let's borrow one of our officers back. Let's station someone there for a little while until we break the back of the drug, of the drug-addled, the service-resistant, so they'll see that going to Parnell Park is not the issue. And then we work with those who do want the services. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Farada, same question, two minutes.
Can you repeat it for me?
I will, again. Whittier homeless situation has affected both residents and business owners. The question, how do you propose to address individuals experiencing homelessness who are unwilling to accept the resources that are being made available to them?
Yes, so I believe the second part of your question is focusing on service-resistant individuals, correct? So when we're looking at the homelessness crisis, we know that it didn't begin in this past year. It, it happened after 1980, when we saw a closing of mental health, you know, institutions, as well as the war on drugs, which criminalized folks that were suffering from substance abuse. Those two things mixed with the lack of affordable housing is a recipe for homelessness. This is not something new. This is not something that was created in the past year, meaning that we could have foreseen this coming as leadership. When we look at Parnell Park, which it happens to be in District Three, we know that's not the epicenter of it. The epicenter of it was all over our city. And then we saw the encampments on the Greenbelt. And then we were, we were sweeping folks and giving them vouchers to go to motels, and then we see them, you know, move to Parnell Park. Why? Because that is not a sustainable solution and is not a comprehensive resolution to homelessness. I believe we have to begin by ensuring that we have enough beds for our community members. I, I believe that we can streamline the nonprofits and services that are already happening to make sure that there is one streamlined location for our community members experiencing homelessness to go and, and attain these services. But I also believe when we talk about our service-resistant individuals, I heard trust come up in this conversation. And I'm not 100% sure how we can assume that, or, or expect these community members to trust us when we have taken it upon ourselves to do campaigns criminalizing them and further marginalizing folks that are already experiencing a bad time. If we're calling them vagrants and we're entertaining vigilante groups in our community that are part, I mean, we just saw a shooting in Parnell Park from a disgruntled community member. As leadership, we have to take responsibility to ensure that we're the example. And if we have lacked in solving this problem, we cannot turn our community against each other in attempts to solve it. And one thing I do know about homelessness is that it cannot be solved by turning the sprinklers on. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, final. We're going to do our closing statements. We're going to start with District One. Ms. Martinez, one minute. Your closing statement, please.
I have lived in Whittier for about 18 years. I've raised my sons here. And I've taught in Whittier schools for about the last 10 years or so. So I'm very familiar with the city of Whittier. I love the city of Whittier. It's been dear to my heart ever since I, even before I moved here. Remember the old restaurant, The Cookery? I loved that restaurant. It was one of the things that I loved about Whittier years and years ago. We don't have The Cookery anymore. But in any case, I want to serve the community of Whittier. I want to see Whittier grow. I want to see families thrive here. I want to see our schoolchildren thrive in the city of Whittier. I'd like to preserve the good things about the city of Whittier that we have to be proud of. We have so many accomplished people that live here, and I'd hate to see anybody else leave. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Mo. Closing statement, one minute.
I am not a politician, but I have lived in the city of Whittier my entire life, and I love the city of Whittier. I am a Rotarian, and our services, and our motto is service above self. I would be very honored to be a city councilwoman, city councilwoman to represent my district. I would be the first Latina representative in the city of Whittier as a woman or as a Latina in Whittier in 122 years. I see a vision for my city. I see a vision of a community being able to walk on the Greenway Trail with lighting and to be able to live in a city where we are comfortable and we feel safe. I see a vision of our children getting a good education. I see a vision of our, of our businesses thriving and doing well. We have many wonderful assets in the city of Whittier, including our Whittier Hills, that many people come from all over the county to see. I'm very proud to live in the city of Whittier. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, shifting over to District Three. Closing statement, one minute. Ms. Warner, please begin.
Thank you. In our community, I believe we would all agree that we have many positives and we have many negatives. I'm very happy about the positives that we have in this community. We have a very diverse community in many, many ways. But that diversity brings us strength as we come together to look for solutions for the challenges that we do have. We have very, very strong nonprofit organizations that are able to collaborate well with each other, that support each other. And that brings, brings strength to our community. We have an exciting adventure that's coming up with the rehabilitation of our central library. The library is the heart of a community. There's many folks that are excited about that. The library also helps to promote the business community, as shown by research. The challenges, we need to, of course, continue to work on our homelessness issue and to eradicate that issue in Whittier. Also, we need to be cognizant of the unfunded pension liability. We need to think seriously about supporting Measure W that will be on our ballot. I support that as a way to help our unfunded pension liability and as a way to bring new officers to our police department. Thank you.
Mr. Moise, closing statement, one minute, please.
Yes, thank you. Again, just want to thank the Chamber for hosting this wonderful forum. It's been a great opportunity to share my values and my experience and my thoughts with the community of Whittier. Basically, I just want to say this. I ran for city council because I want to make a better Whittier. I think deep down, if you're content and happy with us running a budget deficit, if you're content with the proliferation of dollar-discount stores, if you're happy with the way we're handling the homeless problem, if you're happy with the fact that Parnell Park has been taken from us, then you have your city council already, the current incumbents. But if you want to change for Whittier, if you want a vision for Whittier that incorporates both business development and, and, and also good housing for the whole community, and also getting rid of those, removing those who don't want to play the game anymore, just want to do drugs, then you have to look somewhere else, and that's going to be someone like me. So please vote for me on March 3rd, because I will change Whittier for the better. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Farada, closing statement, one minute.
Thank you. Thank you to each and every one of you who made it out here and are actively engaged in your community. Also, thank you to the Chamber for hosting this forum. I am running for the sole purpose of providing District Three an opportunity to move forward. We have seen lack of change, lack of movement, and complacency. And I believe that our district deserves better. I have been actively walking because community inclusion is important to me. I have been speaking to local businesses because support for them is important to me. I have been out there in Parnell Park and speaking to nonprofits because finding a comprehensive solution to homelessness is important to me. And looking over the budget and seeing how, you know, we are now in a, in a, in a deficit, in a deficit crisis, we need to be fiscally responsible moving forward. I do believe that together we can move Whittier forward. I don't want to just replace our leadership. I want to move us in a direction that is forward-thinking and, and visionary. Please follow me at Farada2020. You can also visit our website at FaradaForWhittier.com, and I would be happy to speak with you after this. Thank you.
Thank you to each one of you from the, on behalf of the Chamber of Commerce. And thank you for taking the time, come on, share your story. So how about another round of applause for these candidates?
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Please stay around, ask more questions. Thank you. Thank you for participation.